Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, November 3rd, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the Committee of the Whole. I ask you to all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could someone turn up?
Yeah, I got it. Clerk Spencer, you want the...
On the roll. Okay. Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Doyter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Absent. Absent for the roll. Okay. Leader.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Anquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent. For now.
Thirteen present. One absent. Where is Mr. Dunn? He didn't leave the building, did he?
Well, it's the very hard-working Public Safety Committee. I think he's recovering from the...
Okay.
He's coming in.
Sure he'll be along here shortly. We have...
And I will note when he comes in.
Appreciate it. Mr. Grabowski, anything... Only thing I'll say is, same thing I say every meeting. We're here to review the line items in the budget.
Announcements in public comments.
Announcements? See, I don't have...
Well, you threw it back at me.
Because you needed it to see roll call.
Oh, I got the roll call.
Did you get... Mr. Cop, is there anybody signed up back there?
I got the sheet. No one signed in.
Okay. Announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Public comment, Clerk Spencer, you said there's nobody...
No one signed in.
Okay. No one signed in. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in but wishes to address the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. Business for the council, the budget. Petty, can I hand this back to you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Same thing I said at the beginning of the last meeting. We're here to review the budget. You should all have a revised schedule provided by staff on what we're hoping to cover tonight. Staff, once again, has been aggressive. I appreciate it. We will wrap up no later than 10 o'clock this evening. If we get to a sticking point or you want more information that can't immediately be provided, we will put it on the circle back list. Any questions? City Manager, are you ready to go?
We are. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Dunn is here.
So, we are going to start with the library tonight. Page 172 in your budget book. With us tonight is Marcia Baker, President of the Board, and Mary Beth Harper, the Executive Director of the Library. And I will turn that over for their comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. It's a pleasure to meet with you tonight to review the library's budget. So, I'm Marcia Baker, the President of the Library Board of Trustees. I'd like to begin by introducing the other trustee who's here tonight. Sue Sadowski in the back, and Library Director, Mary Beth Harper. In 2016, the library's staff and administration created a strategic plan to guide us for the next five years. You can find the plan on our website if you'd like to review it. The plan outlines our vision, values, core services, and initiatives. "Prepare to be amazed" is the tagline, and as I talked about 2017 at the Elmhurst Public Library, it is clear that we are working very hard to amaze the community. One of our service initiatives is developing engaging spaces that excite our patrons and encourage more visits. This year, our biggest contribution to the community was the transformation of the former storage area in the library basement to a Maker Space, which we call the Makery. The Makery opened in June to a flurry of activity. It's a 3,500-square-foot space, and it contains a wealth of high-end equipment such as a laser cutter, knitting machine, 3D printer, silhouette cameo cricket knitting machine, and sewing machines that most patrons would not have access to at home. The equipment is available for patron use. Patrons provide their own materials, and the library staff provides teaching and assistance. So, initial reaction to the space has been very positive, with patrons embracing the idea of letting their creative side flourish. We've had people working on a variety of projects, from building a dollhouse to constructing a drone. It's been very interesting to see people of all ages creating, tinkering, and generating ideas about how to use the space. Our director, Mary Beth, commented that the Makery is unique because it is really the only place in the library that is truly a sharing environment. Patrons routinely talk with each other, look over each other's shoulders, and have conversations about the projects that they're working on. We're thrilled to have made this space a reality for the community, and we're looking forward to seeing all the talent that exists right here in our own backyard. In August, 2,279 patrons used the Makery. And if you've not seen or used this incredible space, you are in store to be amazed. Another service initiative was to provide an array of programs and classes that entice all Elmhurst residents to visit the library. So, in June, the library debuted "One Book, One Community" program. "One Book, One Community" gave patrons the opportunity to read and engage with the same book. Staff chose five titles and asked patrons to vote for the one that they wanted to read. The titles were all books of substance meant to spark discussion about social issues. So, Elmhurst patrons chose "Between the World and Me" by Tanisey Coats, and staff developed several book discussions and programs such as movies and TED Talks to complement the reading. It was an opportunity both for staff to gain training and experience in leading book discussions and for the community to come together to discuss social and cultural issues that affect all of us. We were pleased with the patron response and will continue to offer a one-book reading event every year. Pursuing a love of reading is a key part of the vision of the public library. Summer reading continues to be wildly popular, especially in the kids' department. So, visit sometime during registration if you haven't. The kids' department started a new campaign at the end of last year called "A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten," which promotes early literacy, which has also been very popular. The kids' library will undergo a major renovation at the end of this year. The kids' library staff, head by head of kids' libraries, Sharon Carpeel, took time to visit many different children's libraries to get ideas and inspiration. They did a thorough and detailed analysis of how patrons are using the kids' library. They identified the changing needs of the community and created a comprehensive list of priorities to address them. The result is, we will be providing a larger learning garden for preschool children, a dedicated middle school space, and a bigger space for programming and storytelling, and a computer lab. So, another area is marketing in the strategic plan. A marketing committee was formed last year and has been meeting regularly with the goal of spreading the word about our new services and programs and wooing community members who have not yet discovered the library. In addition, there's been an emphasis in reaching out to the Elmhurst business community. We now have a dedicated business center and business librarian. Once a month, we offer an opportunity for patrons who work from home to get together and network. The library plans to continue to update spaces and provide new services and collections to keep up with our strategic plan. Our alternative collections, which we call the Library of Extraordinary Things, continues to grow with new items added at patron request, including cameras, small cooking appliances, crochet and knitting needles, and games. We have new digital databases, including artist works, which allows patrons to take online art classes. And next year, more money is in the budget for digital resources. So, with over 517,000 visits per year, the library remains one of the most popular places in town. As you can see, we are dedicated to encouraging more visits by continuing to offer new and exciting opportunities for the community to engage. Before you tonight, you have our budget, which includes not only our operating expenses but also the funds needed for repayment of our building bonds. The library has levied conservatively for the past few years. We continue that trend this year with a 2% increase. On behalf of the Board, I would like to thank the Mayor, City Council, as well as the City Manager, and the rest of the city staff who help us on a daily basis.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Do we go over the budget first? Do we have questions now?
You know, our budget is... There's not any big surprises in this budget this year. We are continuing to do the children's department. That was in the budget last year and continues to be in the budget this year because it's spanned two years. But there aren't any real big surprises this year. Little bit of shift in commodities, meaning less money in books and more money in digital content, and that's because of consumer... The way people are consuming media right now.
I have two questions. One is, when are we going to be done paying these bonds? You mentioned them.
2022.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then...
Oh, go ahead. We have a couple of years of spike payments before we finish paying off.
Okay. And then the Makery, did that... I heard Ms. Baker say that, was it in August? You had over 2,000 people visit the Makery. How long has that been open?
Since June.
And is there... Is there any... I mean, so you've... It's been open for a little while now. Is there any changes you see immediately that you need to make? Or is it running the way you want it to? Or what's next for it?
Going really well. One of the big things we've had to do is really educate our patrons about how to use the space, meaning that you can't come with your baby blanket and hand it to us and say, "I want this embroidered on it," which was kind of a learning curve for a lot of patrons. It's you come with your blanket, you sit here, and you might have to figure it out. It might take two or three hours, and it's... You know, every one of those machines down there has a learning curve. And the other thing we really had to instruct patrons on is that we're not a craft store. We can't sell supplies there because we could never possibly sell all the supplies we would need. But that's really been kind of the crux of it. What's interesting is some of the machinery that people are using constantly, the laser machine, which engraves wood and glass, and we have people in there every day doing new projects. And as Marcia said, the real interesting thing that's going on down there is the sharing. It's not uncommon, if you're down there working, that somebody will just walk up to you and say, "What are you working on?" And people are more than happy to share their experience, or, "Oh, I'm making this and I'm doing that." So, again, libraries are... I mean, there's other sharing environments, I guess, but you wouldn't walk up to the guy sitting at the desk upstairs, sitting at one of the tables upstairs, working on something, and say, "Hey, what are you working on?" Because you'd be kind of weird. So, it's really a neat environment, and there's just lots of sharing and creating going on down there, and people learning from each other. So, it is working the way we wanted to. Just a little bit of education about how to use the stuff, but the community's really enjoying it.
Great. Alderman Bram, are you sharing?
Am I sharing my dinner? No.
Yeah.
Plus, these are the last two chips, anyway. I just wanted to, one, say I did... I have not used the Makery, but I have taken the tour when it first opened up. And it was very neat to see on everything that was, you know, formerly unused or stored space... I shouldn't say unused. But stored space turned into something where the library patrons can not only use but utilize to a high degree. Seeing the machines and how much... Talking with some of the individuals who set up the Makery, I forgot the gentleman's name since it's been months. A lot of research has seemed to have gone into it, and a lot of dollars as well. And I think the Mayor actually was leading in this direction. I'll take a left turn a little bit. Has the Makery or the high use of the Makery caused any issues? And the first thing that comes to mind is parking. I mean, has there been concerns or complaints in regards to parking? Have the patrons been utilizing Elmhurst Art Museum's parking lot? And has that been a nice cooperative effort? Or anything beyond parking as well? I'm just utilizing that as an example. But anything that you foresee... Oh, no, I dropped half my dinner. Being an issue due to the success of the Makery?
You know, parking is an ongoing issue at the library, to be honest with you. It was like that before we opened up the Makery, although that wasn't going to deter us from opening the Makery. We did work out a partnership with the Art Museum, which has been really great. I don't know what we did without those parking spaces before. However, a couple of years ago, we really increased our programming, and that has brought many more people to the library. So, that was really when parking became a real problem. Along with the Makery, I don't see that that's causing a lot of parking issues. Where we have parking issues is when we have programs and meetings that are scheduled consecutively, especially large programs that attract a lot of people, and then we'll have this meeting and that meeting and that meeting. So, we do have the extra space at the Art Museum, which has really helped. And moving forward, we're going to be looking at how we're scheduling programs and how we're scheduling meetings, which is kind of unfortunate because I'd love to be able to say yes to everybody all the time for meeting room space because our community does seem to have a big need for meeting room space. And our programs, though, we're just going to have to figure out... Can't have back-to-back Storytimes because we attract so many people at the Storytimes. We need to have some sort of a break in between them so that the first people leave, hopefully, and the second group comes in. So, you know, parking has been a problem. I do consider ourselves lucky that we have this problem in some ways because it means people are using us. The opposite would be really unfortunate if I had all kinds of empty spaces out there. But we're constantly looking at ways to figure out what we can do with our parking, and we still do get complaints about it. So, thankfully, we worked out with the Art Museum that we pay them money for parking spots, and they actually need the money. We need the parking spots, and the new director, I have met with him, and he's definitely willing to move forward with our partnership, which is great. So...
One other question in regards to the meeting rooms, which they are always in a high demand. I haven't used them recently, but when I was waiting for the tour to start for the Makery, I was speaking with one of the library staff there, and I believe, unless I misunderstood, the library is considering more of an automated scheduling tool online versus a phone call and finding one or two individuals to, you know, try to book a room. Can you touch on that, if that is true? And are we moving forward with that?
Yes, we are. There's better meeting room software available. A company, a larger library company, took over what we used to use and has put more research and development into it, and supposedly has a pretty good module for online meeting room registration. So, we're looking into it now. Obviously, if it's good, we will definitely be buying it and implementing it because, frankly, registering patrons for meeting rooms is very high... It's a high maintenance job, for sure. So, if we can have patrons register themselves, and then we can just get back to them if we need to on a problem, and we can have a module that verifies that they are an Elmhurst resident, that they have an Elmhurst card, and all that stuff, we will definitely be moving forward with it. So, right now, there's a really good project... product we're looking at. And we do have an automated product for our study rooms upstairs, DIBs, and that's been excellent. So, yeah, definitely moving forward. That's something we'd really like to do.
Great to hear. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments for the library? Alderman Levin.
Well, first, I want to say I'm very proud of the staff and the Board for... Are we supposed to use microphones? Hello. Very proud of the staff and the Board for, you know... People wonder where the future is of organizations. I was just reading some materials recently about how shopping malls are dying out, and how do you reinvent? And the same kind of things probably happen with libraries. Books are going away. How do you stay relevant? And I think from what you are saying, what I've seen, you guys are doing an excellent job. I'm also glad to see that you're taking on a marketing effort as part of your component because I am surprised to see people in town who don't know all the things that are happening in our library. I only had one... So, thank you for all that good work. I only had one question on the budget, and it's not a large item, but on page 175, Service Charges, line 3000. Why... I'm wondering why fines and rentals are taking... projected to take such a large drop. Is it because...
Oh, okay. Yeah. So, that's for 2019. And basically, the trend in libraries right now is that most libraries are going fine-free. Yeah, it's a big trend, and we've been kind of waiting and watching to see what's happening with other libraries. We decided we didn't need to be an early adopter on this. We'll see what happens. We'll see what other libraries are doing. But what I'm seeing is that more and more libraries around the Chicagoland area, and basically nationwide, are going fine-free, they're calling it. So, my big... I was skeptical about it because I thought, oh, everyone's just going to keep the stuff longer, you know? But what happens is, they keep it, and then you automatically go to collections if you don't return it. So, what we have learned and heard from other libraries is that it really cuts down on patron dissatisfaction and employee transactions with having to say, "Hey, you owe me 80 cents. You return this book later," or whatever. And they aren't finding that they're not getting the materials back in a timely fashion. So, it just seems like it's a win-win situation for patrons and for staff to not have to deal with these... Sometimes what happened, and not always, but semi... Well, they're negative. They're negative transactions with patrons, and it really seems to be working. And so, I've been watching. We've been watching, and now more and more libraries are jumping on board with this fine-free. And at some point, we can't be the only library, the only town, that's still charging fines. You know, we have to jump up on board with what the rest of the world is doing. It has never... It was never supposed to be a moneymaker. It was just supposed to be, hey, if we don't charge something, people will keep our materials forever. So, now, what will happen is they'll go directly to... They'll get billed for the books, first of all. They don't go to collections. I kind of spoke wrong there. But they will get billed for lost materials if they don't return them in a timely fashion now. So, what we found is, most people just return the stuff, and they'll return it when they get that notice then. And most people aren't keeping items longer than what they normally would. And it kind of foregoes, like I said, that 80 cents here and there and that, you know, some of those kind of silly transactions that we have to service and that our patrons have to give us money for. And then the other thing is, with more and more... More and more things being checked out digitally and with that trend, I mean, we're never going to be... It's not going to happen overnight where everything is digital, in our library at least. But all the digital materials return on their own when they're expired, so you don't pay any fines for those anyway. So, that's what that's all about.
I was wondering. Very interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Alderman Park.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I just have a question about that. If you go fine-free, how does that affect our queue system for reserving?
It shouldn't. I mean, hopefully, it doesn't. I know what you're saying, so people don't return stuff, and then you have to wait longer for stuff. It should not do that. That's what they found at other libraries. As I said, initially, when I started hearing this happening, I was like, oh, well, that's just going to make everybody wait longer for their items because if you can't... If it's not going to go to billing before six weeks, you're not going to return it before six weeks. But it hasn't been the case. So, yeah, I know. Interesting. I was skeptical. I was not an early adopter with this. I said, "Let's wait and see." And we're going on about four years that some of these places have done it.
You doubted the residents of Elmhurst?
Have I dealt with them as far as... Yeah. Oh, doubted. No. I'm sorry. I thought you said dealt with. And I was going to say, our residents, and I am not just saying this, but it is true, are very conscientious anyway, and they certainly love their library, and I don't think they want to be a hog, you know? So, I have confidence it's going to work. And the thing is, if it doesn't, it would be really hard to turn back, but, you know, it could if we had a huge problem.
I think you guys did great with giving...
But I don't foresee we will.
Yeah. Giving everybody a three-day grace period's good enough.
Yeah.
Like, my kids need it. If they knew there was no due date...
Well, we won't maybe hear now, "Oh, the library should have a wing named after me because I'm so much funnier." So... Exactly. Yes, helps. Yes. Yes. Yeah. And I think most people, if they can't renew it, know it's on hold for someone else, and they usually want to return it. Our patrons are really pretty conscientious, so...
Alderman Leader.
Mary Beth, I think you know me well. I consider myself, and you might, as your best customer. I'm there three, four times a week. I am a lifelong serious reader and a lifelong patron of libraries, and I'm something of an aficionado of libraries. I really do believe that they add immeasurably to the quality of life and not only... They add immeasurably to the value of our homes and to the education of our children. I am the biggest fan possibly of libraries, and I think I'm a pretty good judge of libraries, having first attended... My mother took me to the Chicago Public Library when I was five years old, 1941, actually, and I remember it vividly. It's one of the most vivid memories I have. It was a small Gothic library on 55th Street, South Side of Chicago. The point I'm making is that I honestly believe you have built, pound for pound, the best library I have ever attended, and I think that our library compares favorably, pound for pound, with any library in this country. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Norm. I guess I'll agree. Thank you very much. It's wonderful to hear.
Alderman Brennan.
I have one question on page 177, line 3037. I'm not going to pretend to understand your business, but I am sort of curious, from a contractual service perspective, what does that line item program... If you could provide some examples of what that means.
So, programming is basically any sort of a library program we put on, from kids' programs, Storytimes, crafts, bringing in a presenter to all the adult programs we do. Again, crafts, presenters, book discussions, and that's where all the money for programs that we provide for the public, both the supplies and/or the presenters, anything we might need for the program, comes out of that line. And there's been... We've increased that in the last couple of years greatly. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, my only question is, in terms of the hours of the library, how do we compare with other communities of our size? When I look at a business and it's extremely crowded five minutes after it opens, I think that, well, maybe they should open earlier.
On a specific day, like Sunday?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only day we open later, right?
Yeah. So, I'm just posing that question.
That is something that we've been asked occasionally. Of course, it does have budget implications, but we are open 72 hours a week. The one time that we're open longer than a lot of libraries is Friday. We provide Friday nights. A lot of libraries close at 5:00 on a Friday night. So, Sunday is one of our very busy days because of the hours we're open. It's certainly something moving forward that we can consider, and I think if we do do that, maybe surveying our public and finding out where they really do want hours, whether or not we, say, because of budget implications, decrease hours on a Friday night and provide more hours on a Sunday or something, or we just add additional hours on a Sunday if we can handle that and if that's what our public wants. So, you bring up a good point, and I think libraries definitely struggle with where to best service their patrons and what hours. And Sunday is a popular day. There's no doubt about it. And it makes sense to be kind of open longer on a Sunday when most people are off work. So, yeah, something that is certainly a consideration.
Any other questions? Okay. Okay, I'd like to thank Ms. Harper and Ms. Baker and everybody involved in the library and the board as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We thank you.
So we will shuffle a couple of seats here, and I will ask the members of the Heritage Foundation who will be representing tonight, another Baker, I don't know if there's a relation there.
We'll find out in a minute.
I'm sure you'll ask. And I'll ask Mike Kopp to join me at the table as well, as the acting director for another 36 or so hours, I think. Our new director, Dave Olberg, starts on Wednesday. I understand he'll be attending the Heritage Foundation meeting tomorrow night as well as a welcome. And when he was, he was at the American Legion event, the Military Ball over the weekend, so I know a couple of you had an opportunity to meet him. He is very excited to start on Wednesday and will be sitting next to me next year. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike Baker.
Thank you, Mayor Morley, city council members, City Manager Grabowski and Assistant City Manager Mike Kopp. I'm Mike Baker, I'm the newly elected president of the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation. I do have the unique opportunity tonight, since the museum is in transition of directors, to review the accomplishments of not only the foundation, but also the museum, and look forward to what each is looking to in the next year. As many of you know, the executive director of the museum, Brian Berghager, retired October 2nd. In 29 years, Brian took what was a small, local museum to an award-winning, regional, renowned museum known for high-quality exhibits and a local Elmhurst exhibit which highlights our history of this amazing town. After vetting 75 different candidates, city staff settled on a new executive director. He will begin on Wednesday of this week. He comes to us from Grayslake, where he was executive director at the Grayslake Heritage Center for seven years, and prior to that, he served as executive director at the Geneva History Center. Staff in the foundation are excited about the opportunities a new director will bring to the museum. For those of you who may be new to the council, the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation is the fundraising arm of the Elmhurst History Museum. We support the museum and the Churchville Schoolhouse by advocating, educating, and fundraising on its behalf. Annually, we make a grant to the museum to reach its goals and to maximize the impact of the monies from the city-approved budget. This year, our grant to the museum was $40,000. It covers numerous areas, including $20,000 towards exhibits, $9,000 towards public programs, $5,000 in development and fundraising, and $6,000 in consultant fees for the By All Accounts Museum exhibit. The history museum staff and the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation collaborated on many events. Some events were held by museum staff, some with foundation members, and others, we combined our resources. In March, the exhibit featuring Marion Mahoney Griffin, the first woman architect in Illinois, concluded. The House and Home exhibit followed, and it explored the question of what makes a house a home. This exhibit was an array of photos, interactive displays, and household objects telling the story of the American home. The foundation fully funded the exhibit with sponsors, the Elmhurst 255 Apartments and Leo Reedy Real Estate. Next, this year, the history museum continued its tradition of showstopping summer exhibits with Disco Demolition the Night Disco Died. This exhibit was created by our own museum staff, based on a book that tells the story of a 1979 radio promotion at Comiskey Park that just got a bit out of hand. An exhibit preview was held before the opening with radio personalities Steve Dahl, author Dave Hoekstra, and photographer Paul Natkin. To promote this exhibit, the foundation and museum staff worked out an agreement with WLUP Radio promoting the exhibit. In fact, the exhibit's been extended through the end of the year, so if you haven't seen it, be sure to stop by. The museum continues to update its other exhibits as well. The ongoing exhibit, All Accounts: The Story of Elmhurst, has several additions this year. There's a new section featuring information on Elmhurst veterans, organizations. In collaboration with the American Legion, the history of World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and Iraq and others are memorialized. The first scheduled exhibit next year is Freedom: A History of the U.S., which has planned to run from January to March. It traces the concept of freedom from the founding of the country through 1968. Following this exhibit, the museum is proud to host a world premiere traveling exhibit, it's Snoopy and the Red Baron. The exhibit shows the full story of the Red Baron character and how Charles Schultz researched all of the aspects of World War I to bring authenticity to the comic strips. Our summer exhibit has not been decided yet, and that will be in the hands of our new director, so keep posted. The museum had many special events this year, including Elmhurst Neighborhood Tour, 21st Annual Museum Day, Disco Explosion Community Event with the School of Rock, the showing of the movie Saturday Night Fever on its 40th anniversary at the York Theater, and a sold-out quarry tour that more than 500 people attended. Elmhurst Heritage Foundation and the museum staff will again join together this year on December 1st to host the jolly old St. Nicholas Concert. In addition to all the successes at the museum, the Churchville Schoolhouse had more than 800 students participate in a living history experience at the schoolhouse. The foundation prepares and provides free transportation for children to experience what it was like to attend a one-room schoolhouse 100 years ago. The museum continues to identify ways to expand the programming at the schoolhouse. For example, our annual open house will be held on April 29th, 2018, rather than in the fall, and in this manner, children have an opportunity to bring their families before the school year ends. Additionally, the museum's collection staff continues to expand the digitization of the photo archives to make more items available for the public and further the museum's mission of promoting history in the present day. The long-term vision of the Heritage Foundation was recently developed through a strategic plan. This followed the museum, who completed their strategic plan in 2015. We anticipate our strategic plan will be a living, breathing document which helps us align our goals and assist the museum in meeting theirs. In September, the foundation co-sponsored the Third Annual Craft Beer Fest. Over 500 people attended the event this year. There was a large amount of diversity at the event, including attendees coming from 30 surrounding communities. This event was made possible through a partnership with the Rotary Club, our 34 sponsors, including platinum sponsors, the Red Arrow Tap Room, Pints, Suburban Bank and Trust, a Wintrust Bank, and over 71 volunteers that helped out. It's quickly becoming a local tradition, so I encourage you right now to mark your calendars for September 15th, 2018. In addition to the large-scale events, the foundation conducted several important community events. We conducted the Ruth Strand Poster Contest again this year with over 300 students participating. Winners were recognized at a previous city council meeting in May. We hosted a staff appreciation luncheon, and finally, we hosted a candidate forum earlier this year at the outset of the campaign season. The Heritage Foundation welcomed several new members this year, Tom Tyler, Bob Rashel, Rob Butler, Gene Baker, Peggy Baviar, and Pete Griffin. Other members continued their service for another three years, including Michael Cicero, Kathy Seegert, and Ellen Braun. The museum also said goodbye to a few people as well. Curator of Collection Nancy Wilson retired after many, many years on the staff. Curator of Exhibits Lance Towser moved on to a new opportunity. Dan Lund has replaced Nancy Wilson, and Jesse Sekia has returned to the staff, working full-time as the museum educator and community programs coordinator, as well as the schoolhouse MARM. This dedicated staff appears excited and ready to grow the museum's outreach in the year ahead. Many thanks to all of you for the support of the museum and the foundation, to Mike Kopp, who oversaw the staff during the transition period, and to City Manager Grabowski for allowing the foundation to have a part of the search process for the new director. We always appreciate Mayor Morley's support at our events. We hope to have a welcoming reception to meet the new director in early 2018, and hope you folks can attend. We will continue to do our part to bring excitement of learning history to our residents. We have 100% of our board members as donors to the Elmhurst Heritage Foundation and the museum, and I encourage you to be a part of this special place. Your support of the museum will keep our hidden gem a very valuable asset in our community. We will continue to support the museum as a foundation, as we have done for 10 years. We encourage each of you to join us by becoming a member or a donor of the museum. As a council, you are making history with every meeting and decision you make. The museum and its treasures offers the community through exhibits, programs, and the Churchville Schoolhouse, or simply a social event, helps to make us part of what makes Elmhurst special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Could I introduce the-
Absolutely.
...that are here? We do have several Heritage Foundation members here. Gene Baker is one of our new board members, John DeVries, Michael Cicero, who just got reappointed to another three years, Kathy Jordan, who you've seen around a few times in different situations, and Kathy Seegert, who likewise just signed on for another three years. So we're very pleased to have them part of our organization.
Okay, very good. Any questions or comments for Mr. Baker or Mr. Kopp? Mr. Bram.
Thank you. On page 153, 1001 and 1002, which is essentially full-time and part-time salaries. My question is, we've had, I would say, two veterans leave the history museum, but we see the projected 2018 salaries go from about 300 to $338,000 from a full-time staff perspective. So about 14% increase, where I would make the assumption at least that after having long-term employees leave, that the salary base would stay the same, if not even go down. So if you can actually kind of touch on the salaries for both 1001 and 1002, since part-time significantly went down, did we add an additional FTE to replace additional, or the part-time staff? And if so, why so?
Correct. So what has happened in the part-time staff is we took three part-time positions and added one, got rid of three part-time positions and added one full-time position. So Dan Lund was a part-time registrar, and when Nancy Wilson left, he took over both positions. He took over Nancy Wilson's position as the curator of collections and also kept his responsibility as a registrar. So we lost one part-time position that way. And Jesse Sekia was a part-time programs coordinator, and she actually was a part-time coordinator here, she left for another position, and then we took the part-time program coordinator and the educational programs coordinator. There were two part-time positions and made it one full-time position. So the part-time went down by three part-time positions and the full-time increased by one full-time position.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor. Is that the reason, again, on the same page 153, that 20-04 health insurance, and I didn't look in detail the other employee benefits, but the health insurance significantly is being projected 50% increase from 40,000 up to 60,000? Is the additional FTE the rationale to see it, other than typical increases annually?
Yeah. They're assuming they're taking health insurance, so that's put in the budget that way.
So that's the-
So it's the health insurance.
Additional FTE?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add to the discussion that was just going on, I think the council knows that when we have an opening, we look at all opportunities to fill that, whether it's full-time, or it's part-time, or it's contract. In this particular case, we had some difficulty keeping people in those two part-time roles that we had. They were very different, but we had a lot of turnover. And so as we considered that, and we knew that Jesse wanted to come back, that's when we made the decision to make that back into a full-time role, as Assistant Manager Kopp said. We were able to get rid of two part-times, actually, three part-times for all of that.
Okay. Any other comments?
Did you call on me?
I did. Did you raise your hand?
I did.
Alderman Levin.
Thank you. We did lose a couple of key staff members, and I think that Lance Towser was probably pretty well-respected for the kinds of creative exhibits that he brought to the city. I think he had a unique capability for that. Are we, have we replaced that position in terms of, I don't know what you call it, director of exhibits, or curator?
Yeah, that was the curator of exhibits. We have kept that open until the new director comes on board, and the new director can make the choice. As Mr. Baker said, we have some money plugged in, not knowing how that's going to roll out in the short term. We suspect there's going to have to be some additional exhibits brought in, rather than jumping right into creating our in-house ones. So once Dave gets here, we'll have that discussion as to how he wants to fill that. We have kept the position in the budget.
I see. Thank you.
Alderman York, I'm going to go to Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So I'd like to give the foundation an opportunity to kind of toot their own horn. I know historically, we've gotten kind of a little sub-schedule at a request of certain aldermen about the different expenditures and revenues and so on and so forth, but can you kind of bring to light the investment that the foundation makes in the museum operations?
In terms of the grant, is that? The grant itself is outlined by the director. In fact, our grant this year is the same as it was last year for $40,000. When an exhibit is presented to us, generally, six months ahead of time, ideally, David Olberg expects exhibits to be presented to us about 12 to 18 months ahead of time. We'll have the opportunity to go out and solicit local sponsors to sponsor the exhibits. And basically, the $20,000 that we have for exhibits, if we get sponsors, offsets that grant and provides us more opportunity to help the museum. In the area of public programs, the $9,000, since we pay for the school buses to take the children to the Churchville Schoolhouse, it's free to them, and we're looking to expand that program at the schoolhouse, perhaps looking at outlying areas, other communities that may have a need for bus service to the Churchville Schoolhouse. And so our grant is based on what the director feels he would want us to help out with, and then we have a campaign each year, an annual fund donor drive, and people give to that, which then takes care of the grant or helps out with the grant during the year, so.
All right, yeah, I just wanted to give you the opportunity, I think the participation by the foundation and stuff is invaluable, and it's an asset to the community and-
Thank you.
-definitely to be recognized.
Thank you.
Alderman Brennan.
154, line item 8023. It looks like for the last several years, there's been a capital project that's been desired, or maybe I'm misreading the data, but it looks like it hasn't gotten done, and I see a reserve for 145K for that. What is the project, and are there any dependencies that need declared to do it?
The 145,000 is for the HVA system at the Education Center, which we've been nursing along for years now, but I think this year, it's finally come to its time where it needs to be replaced. And there's also some planning, design, planning and design dollars for Education Center. And the Education Center, as everybody knows, was an office building at one time, never really set up to be an education center, so there are some certain things that we need to do there, for everything from the utility facilities, as far as the bathrooms, to just the open area, the electronics setup as far as the projectors and stuff like that, and just the design of that building. So it's something we know we needed to do, we've sort of been pushing it off, but now we've got some dollars in there to do the design and planning for that project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I wanted to follow up on Alderman Brennan's comments. That was the capital outlay on page 154. How does that dovetail in regards to, and I think Assistant City Manager Kopp, you might have touched on this, but I want to confirm, on page 153, 50-01, the building, is that the planning aspect that you just spoke about?
50-01 building, the big part of that is it's time to power wash, tuck, point, and paint the Gloss Mansion. That's the majority of those dollars. The rest of it's just normal maintenance dollars that are in that budget to take care of anything that would happen along, during the year.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, and Alderman York touched on it, was in regards to the foundation, what revenue the foundation has brought in in the past year and what they plan to do in 2018 fiscal year versus, you know, our ultimate dollar amount, which is around the million-dollar mark for the operating expenses of the museum. If I understood Mr. Baker, I heard about a $40,000 grant, is that what is proposed for 2018 fiscal? But then I also heard a $20,000 marker as well thrown out there, so if you can clarify for me, I'd appreciate it.
The grant this year that was requested by the director, and that would have been by Brian Berghager prior to his retirement- by Brian Burghager prior to his retirement, was $40,000 from the foundation. We will fundraise for different special requests. In fact, we're anxious to hear some of the projects that the new director may wish to take on. One of the aspects is perhaps the beautification of the grounds around the museum and the Ed Center. Some of the things, there's a potential path between the Churchville Schoolhouse and the Fisher Farm, which would enable schoolchildren to have a full day at the farm and at the schoolhouse. And so there's a lot of discussion on that. So in addition to the grant, which is $40,000, and $20,000 of that is towards exhibits, we can respond to different project requests and look to fundraise for those to help supplement what is already out there in the city budget.
So the minimum goal is $40,000, and then on top of that, depending on what is down the line in 2018?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I want to bring up one other thing that's in the budget that you don't see here, under educational programming, is we want to look at next summer to start all-day camps, and it's to be the Museum Explorer Camp. It's allow us, I think, to access a niche in the camp sector that will allow us to also reconnect with the families with all-day camps that are not sports-based, but educational, cultural, and experience-based. And we're lucky that our educational and program, public program coordinator, Jess Sekia, that we talked about before, has done this successfully in a past position, where she's developed, implemented camps. And I want to bring that forward, because when the new director gets on, we want to update him on that, as long as he's okay with us moving forward on that. It's something that we need to start working on fairly quickly for next year. And so, once the new director's on board, and if he's on board with the whole thing, we want to bring it to the Public Affairs and Safety sometime in the near future, just to update everybody on what our thought process is for doing it. And besides that, I think this will also be a revenue-generating program for the museum, so we'll see how that all goes forward, and I'd like to bring it forward to the council in the near future.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll thank Mr. Baker and Mr. Kopp for all their hard work.
Okay, we have one more transition. Tom, you come up. Chief, come on up. So next, we'll be moving to page 129, which is the police department. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Mike Ruth.
The primary goals of the Alhers Police Department are always, will always be safety and security. But also very important to us is a cooperative partnership that we maintain with our community. I was reading a recent Department of Justice article that identified collaborative partnership with the police and the community that they serve to be of paramount importance. And many of the communities that have challenges with their police force often have a breakdown between communication and the collaborative partnership. So we work very hard at that. Just a few notable items, and then I'll talk about some budgetary areas that we've gone up and have gone down in. You know, one of the most popular programs that we have is neighborhood roll calls. And we did 37 so far in year 2017, and we interacted with 700 of our residents. Since they began in 2014, 2,803 residents have attended a neighborhood roll call here in the city of Alhers. Drug takeback was, has also been very, very important to us. And so far in 2017, the police department has collected 848 pounds of prescription drugs this year. And this is a result of some of the prescription takeback days, where we took in 282 pounds. And the drug collection box, it's in the lobby of the police station, which accounted for 566. But since its inception in 2014, we've collected 2,198 pounds of prescription drugs. And if you think about it, a small little tablet, what is the weight of that? So 2,100, almost 2,200 pounds so far. We also view that as a very successful program. The police and the fire department have deployed Narcan 11 times in 2017. And unfortunately, we've had four fatal opiate overdoses. What we're seeing at in terms of police calls for service and activity levels is it's trending upward. There's been a 16% increase in call volume and activity since 2012. Presently, we are 2.5% above the workload indicators as compared to this point in time from last year. So what we've seen is a continual, slowly but gradual, increase in our activity levels and calls for service. Some of the other increases that we're seeing in terms of crime is we're seeing increases in burglary to autos, which mostly are unlocked cars. We've seen some increases this year in some criminal sexual assaults. Domestic battery continues to be on the rise. We've watched that rise over the last five years, each year, and aggravated battery. We've also seen a significant increase in unlawful use of weapons, which would be a possession of a firearm illegally. The last, I'm sorry, currently, year-to-date, we've had 13. Last year, we had six. The previous year before that was six. So there's been a decrease, what we have seen is a decrease in residential burglary. This year, year-to-date, we've seen 21. Last year, we saw 29. The year before that, 33. But in 2012, there were 80. So we've seen that continue to take down. In terms of our staffing, we continue to operate at a budgeted level of 68 sworn police officers. At the present time, as of today, we are at full staff. We have five officers in field training, and one of them who is in the police academy. His graduation date should be December 1st. It's expected that two of the five who are in field training will be released to solo patrol within the next two weeks. Part-time officers provide a great supplement for us. We hired two part-time officers in 2017, but then we experienced a loss of two who resigned and went on to other opportunities. We currently have 14 part-time police officers who assist us with prisoner transports, prisoner processing, transports to DuPage County Jail. They also patrol the downtown district with extra patrols, with an emphasis on the parking structures. In the last 12 months, we've experienced 149 calls for service at the Addison, Larch, Adelaide, and Schiller Park decks. Addison counted for 101 calls for service. So with that said, moving into the budget, at 1002, under part-time, we're looking at an increase from 300 to 330 to fund a part-time records position, which was previously in the contract staffing. We had somebody for a period of time, they left, and we made a decision that we might have better luck finding a longer-term, part-time employee if we transition from contract to an actual part-time employee for us. And that turned out to be very good. We recently gained an experienced records person with a long, 20-plus years in law enforcement and records, so they're coming to us with a great deal of background. One of the other positions is we're looking to reactivate a position of civilian background investigator, and that's due to the number of background investigations that we're conducting. The backgrounds that we do involve or include fire applicants, police officer applicants, liquor license, solicitor, and raffle application. Our year-to-date numbers for backgrounds is 161. And there are currently 21 right now in the process, as of today. So we're looking for a little help, because those backgrounds are filled by detectives and sometimes our mission team officers, and it takes them away from other duties and Under 3018, Dukeham, there's a decrease from 824 to 818, and that's a result of quarterly fees and a new facility projected cost. Last year, when we did the budget, they gave us an approximation of some cost, and they came in a little less than we had anticipated and planned on. 3048 is the police social service. We have a social worker that works part-time for the police department. He's a contract employee. And there's an annual CPI increase of 2.5%. So that goes from 62 to 63.5. Contract staffing, which I kind of alluded to under part-time, 3092, is a decrease from $64,000 to $45,000. And that part-time records clerk was hired part-time, and the position will be taken out of part-time employees. Under 3098, other services, there's an increase from $83,000 to $140,000. And that's as a result of DUC, excuse me, DUCUS, which is the new records management system. And that was a 45, I'm sorry, a $55,000 increase, along with $2,000 increase in license plate reader fees. The new RMS, we're reaching the end of life with our current police reporting system, and it's no longer being supported. So as a result, many of the communities in DuPage, not everyone, but the high 90%, are going to the new records management system. And that'll, it's really going to be a state-of-the-art record system with shared information, where it will assist us in gathering data and some significant advances in analytics. So using the analytics, we can try to determine the predictability of crime, how to deploy our resources to effectuate the safest for our community. Another significant decrease you may see is 50-01, which is buildings. And that's decreased due to a building study we conducted this year, $60,000 with FGM. And we're currently waiting for the results from the building study to come in. We expect them any day. But based on that, that'll, we'll look at that and then try to come up with an action plan of how we will proceed. Under 6031, under grants, there's an increase of $70,000 to $80,000, and that pertains to grants from the Illinois Department of Transportation. It's a reimbursable account. So there's an expenditure, and then the money comes back in from the state. And 6087, 6087 is the explorers, and that's a reimbursable account, at which the police explorer fundraising, when they do car washes and other things, they place the money into a city account, and then the city, we use the city account for distribution of their own funds. And I'm open to any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Alderman Levin?
I was just wondering where in the budget, I know that we have the building study, and I know we don't have air conditioning in the police department, which, I guess, that's one way to cut. But I couldn't find in the budget, in the capital budget or here, where the money is going forward, in case after the building study comes back and it says we need to do some, which I think might be fairly significant improvements.
Yes, we're, under the current budget, I think we had allocated about $875,000 for a new air conditioner, cooling system, basically. The building's 28 years old, and instead of moving forward with replacing the air conditioner, we rented a chiller on a temporary basis. And want to wait and see what the study comes back in terms of how we should proceed. I think our concern was that we spend money for a new cooling system, find out that the space that we were going to use it in would be better used to something else, or, you know, it's inadequate. So what we've done at this point is to, we're in the process of encumbering the funds or a carryover, and wait and see what the reporting, what the study comes back as.
Is that 8023? Is that the 795?
Yeah, it's our intent to carry over in that, to pay for the chiller this year, well, we paid for it this year, and to carry over into next year if we have to rent it again, which we're probably heading towards. Dr. Killian says it'll look a little better this year. We'll have better positioning and screening on it than it did last year.
Let's just carry, stays in the capital budget, yeah. All right. All right.
Alderman Mulliner?
I just want to make note, it's in the capital budget, and I just really want to press a little bit that we get this done, and I know that this is more a public works thing, but under CEB 89, the screening on the deck, I'm very concerned about the security of the police officers there, and I really would like to make sure that we push pretty hard to get that done, to secure it, so that there's more security there for them.
That's one of the issues that the Space Needs Study is also addressing. And I think with many of these things, we've looked at it from a bigger perspective. We've got some shifting on the columns on the outside of the building, which have shifted maybe three and a half to four inches sideways. And we just want to make sure that when we move forward, that we're not spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on something that'll be taken down within a year or so.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure they're safe.
Yes.
And if I could address the columns, they're not structural. We had that looked at right away. It was more decorative, so we're fine with that as well, but we are having it all looked at at the same time.
Alderman Park, and then I'll go to Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you guys just, I'm new, so if you could just help me understand the 10-03, the overtime for full-time, you know, almost $900,000? Like, how many person hours is that in? What's the tipping point to order, I mean, to hire another person to the force?
Well, there's contractual obligations that money comes out of, for example. All the holiday pay for the police officers and the other staff that work on the holidays, so it's contractual, we have to follow that. Court appearances, trials, subpoenas, appearances before the grand jury, all, if it's not on duty, it comes out of the overtime budget. Due to manpower staffing, perhaps because of a sick call, you know, even though we are at full strength, we are not at operational foot strength, which means their, you know, their bodies, but they're not ready for solo patrol yet. So during most of the summer, we operated about 10% understaffed. And when, that in conjunction with some sick calls, those tend to add up pretty quickly. If we've identified, or have identified, or we can see an emerging trend with crime, we also use that to put back additional police officers on the street during set periods of time to respond to or to make arrests. If we have an incident that occurs towards the end of their shift, they just can't pack up and go home, our personnel must stay. And a good example of that was the shooting that occurred just a few weeks ago. It occurred just moments before shift change, and so those officers had to stay over until we were able to take care of the scene and then a follow-up investigation.
Okay, so it's not something that could be alleviated by having another person, just because of the way day-to-day operations with holidays and all that are?
Right. In a normal, you know, office environment, you could do it that way, but, you know, when the whistle blows, we just can't stop what we're doing and go home, so.
Always on. And we thank you.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Ruth, I'm on page 130, line 8098. Is that earmarked for anything specifically?
Could you repeat that again, Alderman Brennan?
Page 130, line item 8098.
8098. Oh, yes. That is for the license plate readers. And so we're looking at putting additional LPRs throughout the city. Ultimately, we would like to have all ingress and egress routes into and out of basically the city with license plate reader cameras. They're fairly pricey, but we've had a lot of good luck and success with solving crimes and apprehending serious criminals.
Very supportive of that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's about ten thousand dollars a lane, is what the cost. So when you get north in eighty-three, for example, three northbound lanes, two turn lanes, you need five cameras just to get the northbound. And then another five for the other side, and then eastbound or westbound, so.
So they have a new.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you. Pretty much all my questions have been answered now by waiting for the other aldermen to ask. But I wanted to ask one other question in regards to license plate readers. And Chief, me and you exchanged an email or two back in October. With this additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the license plate readers, do we feel that we will either be at total coverage of ingress egress? Or what percentage will we be at? And if we're not at a hundred percent, I see City Manager shaking his head no, what is our plan to get there? Is it a two-year plan, a six-year plan, somewhere in between?
It's a two-year plan. And if you take a look at the budget, it shows it in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. Yeah, we want to make it fifty percent, but I think the location and how we roll it out will make the determination. We'll go as far as we can for two fifty and then kind of hold it over. But, you know, ultimately, what we want to get to is full coverage. And, you know, we've had several discussions with the deputy chiefs and the detective commander in terms of, you know, what are the most, how do we prioritize the most traveled routes or escape routes for people involved in criminal activity? So we aren't always in full agreement, but then, of course, then we'll see an emerging trend that kind of takes in a different direction. So we'd like to get as far as we can with the two fifty and then finish it up for the final year.
Okay. So the plan is, you know, ballparking, end of two thousand, fiscal two thousand and nineteen, we'll have a hundred percent coverage of ingress egress?
That's our goal.
Okay. Great to hear. I mean, you already spoke to the shooting that happened, was that last week or two weeks ago? And I know that the LPRs played a role in that. I'm not saying that was the only piece of the puzzle. But I think, as I think Alderman Brennan already stated, it's a great tool to have in our tool belt, and the quicker we can get coverage, especially anything for the major arteries, right, like On and Off Expressways, North Avenue, Roosevelt, St. Charles, et cetera. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Plomsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, I'm looking at page one thirty, sixty twenty-seven. Is it correct that forfeiture expenses are really not the expenses associated with the forfeiture, but those are the revenues received or gained through forfeiture and then spent on other items? Is that correct?
Yeah, those are funds from the asset forfeiture account. We're required to use them within three years of the award. It's not a real hard line, but that's what they like to see is within three years. So we put that number in as a placeholder. In the event some of the LPR cameras didn't work out, or if we find something that may need some specific equipment, if it fits the criteria for asset forfeiture, then we'd be able to use that.
Thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
My question is related to training. So on page one thirty, line sixty eleven, looks like the training has gone up slightly over the past few years. Can you comment, does that include the police academy fees? Is that in there? Is the first question. And then the second question is, training's a big deal for our police department, and I know we focus a lot on that. I see it in the Friday notes, there's a lot of training going on. How much training is non-budgetary versus more formal training that we have to pay for? Are there a lot of hours that the officers are incurring that we're not shelling out funding for? If you can just comment on that.
Well, we've got a goal to have every officer receive forty hours, minimum of forty hours, additional training per year. We've already exceeded that for all of our officers. That's kind of the first part. There are some training classes that are free. We utilize that, we send it to our personnel. You know, so we do have some of those types of training. What we've experienced over the last several years is significant turnover of personnel due to retirements. And as such, we've promoted patrol officers to sergeants, sergeants to commanders, commanders to deputy chiefs. And as a result, there's additional training that goes along with those. Take that very, you know, very seriously, very important. And what I've done is I've put together a matrix for supervision. So the first matrix is a three-week class out of Northwestern University. The second component is a ten-week course of Staff and Command, which is currently being hosted at the police department now, two weeks on, two weeks off. We've got two people in that class. And then the third component is called the Executive Management Program, EMP, also out of Northwestern University. So we want our supervisors to slowly go through that process and incrementally continue to move forward. Again, within the last five years, all of our supervisors have been promoted. So we see that. And then the police officers that come out of the academy, their learning doesn't end there. Really, that's where their learning just begins once they are released to solo patrol. So there's all sorts of constitutional law updates, civil liability and procedure, all of those things for our personnel. So it's very important for us, and especially in today's environment, making sure that they have, that they're properly trained with de-escalation tactics. We're seeing more mental health crisis situations. And we want our officers to be really on the front end of that and on the cutting edge in order to provide better service to the residents of our community, but also as a liability to make sure that we're not exceeding our lawful authority.
Yes. Any other questions?
And I'm sorry, if I could just add one thing, the City Manager mentioned something to me. We participated in a drill at the hospital last week. And we would consider that, those officers that participated in that emergency disaster drill, as part of training.
And my point in mentioning that is that's one that doesn't cost us anything, as you were commenting about, Alderman Dunn, that you might not see in the budget, but yes, our officers are out training in that.
Any other questions or comments for Chief Ruth? Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate all the hard work. Good to see Deputy Chiefs Tannehill and McLean here as well. Thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work. City Manager Grabowski, how are we doing on time, and where do you want to go?
Well, that's, I appreciate you bringing that up. In order to maximize the last thirty minutes, I would ask if we could skip to public works and try to get through that. We do have a few members of staff who are here with Director Killian tonight. And so if we could jump to letter F.
So we'll jump over D and E, put those on for next time. And with the twenty-six minutes we have, we're going to work on public works.
Yes.
Great, let's go. Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
I was actually going to make a request. I have a decent amount of questions for public works. I don't know if we're going to get through them all tonight, so I was actually going to make the opposite recommendation of maybe have public works at the next meeting and cover all public works, and try to complete the rest of the items on the agenda.
Mr. Bram, do your questions pertain to all different areas here? Or is there any that, in combination with that, Mr. Grabowski, is there any way to parse this stuff out? Alderman Bram has given us fair warning that he has some questions.
We can parse out public works and get to a portion of it. Certainly, if you want to send us questions that you have after tonight, we're happy to do it that way as well.
Okay. So we'll try to get through some of it.
So that'll be page one thirty-two is where we'll start.
Thank you for allowing us to present this tonight. We will jump right into page one thirty-two, which starts off with the engineering, which is street and bridge administration. Our major focus this year, as you may recall, was stormwater projects with the engineering group. We completed six of the projects this year, the York two ninety, Madison, Washington, Golden Meadows, York Commons, and Harrison. Next year, our focus for stormwater will be to work on the Messiah, that portion of the project down there, the Jackson Projects, and then continued investigation into the Sailor Swain Valette and the College U programs. So those are the ones that we'll be moving forward on focusing as far as stormwater projects. Something we did this year, if you remember, in front of the police station, we had installed a demonstration rain garden, which was partially funded with DuPage County money. And that's turned out very nicely. And we're putting together a brochure that we can hand out if residents have questions on the benefits and the type of plants that are there. Also, next to the police station, you'll notice the Palmer Underpass is mostly complete. Schedule still is to have that up, and pretty much the lane's back open shortly. Some of the landscaping at this point will remain into next spring, just for the planting weather. If you recall, that was for the failed retaining walls along that portion. One thing that significant accomplishment of staff also in this year was that we obtained right now a ten million dollar grant for the metro station. If you remember, that process started up early in the year. We were able to apply for C-MAC funding, and we're able to obtain ten million of that project. So we are looking at some other funding, but that is what we have so far lined up directly for that. In fiscal year eighteen, we'll be overseeing some roadway projects through the downtown besides the normal resurfacing and other programs. We'll be working on York Street from first up to north. That'll be rehabbed, and it'll be a major project right in the center of downtown here. We also have federal funding for Poplar from Park to Valette. And then we will be starting working up on some additional industrial streets, kind of like we did on Industrial Drive itself. We also plan on major project will be to begin design of the actual metro station itself, the phase two, get into the design, the look of the architecture, how it'll all be laid out there to continue to move that project forward. Some of the main increases in that account this year, and again, if you're on page one thirty-two, is thirty dash twenty-six. Engineering, we're requesting an additional sixty-nine thousand dollars. What we're finding is we're having additional requests for surveying of projects, traffic studies and drainage investigations, that is exceeding the capabilities of staff that we have on hand. So we're looking to add about sixty-nine thousand dollars in that account. Thirty ninety-two contractual staffing, we're also requesting an addition of thirty-seven thousand dollars. That is for our permit review to cut down the amount of time that single families are taking to go through and get through the process. And we've seen a large influx of commercial permits this last year, which again has been stressing the staff and the need to bring in outside consultants. And then one other item we have, it's small, but it's under Minor Equipment forty thirty-one. We are looking at purchasing a sandbagger. It is actually a machine from a vendor close by that is actually eases the amount of, the stress on the body when we make sandbags for the residents for the flooding situation. So we'll be looking to add that under Minor Equipment.
Do you want to stop at each account then, to see if there's? Are there any questions regarding, I guess we'll go account by account, would probably be easiest to?
So, Mr. Killian, does that cover administration?
That covers, yes, the sixty forty accounts.
Any questions? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. The question is, I guess, when it comes to full-time staff, engineering staff, versus contractual services engineering, it seems like we continue to grow up, have a higher demand in regards to our engineering services every year, due to the policies that we up here create, as well as just overall demand throughout the community of various projects, et cetera. I understand, obviously, there's huge benefits of contractual services from not needing to pay benefits. But I guess there also could be a lack of efficiency of using contractual services compared to having full-time staff. Long-winded way of asking the question of, you know, have we considered adding to our in-house engineering staff compared to continuing going contracting route? I know by being on the Public Works Committee for a while now, the engineering staff we have to date does an excellent job. But they're also, including yourself, Mr. Killian, Director Killian, overloaded, it seems like, and has a lot on their plate. So I was just wondering if that's been considered by staff, and what was the results if it was?
You know, we look at that from time to time. And if you remember, we had an opening earlier this year, which we were able to fill. One of the problems we run into is, while it would be nice at times to have additional staff on hand, right now, we're really heavy focused on stormwater and all the single-family permits that are coming through. Our concern is that, and what we look at, is if we were to hire more staff, if the single family has a downswing, now we're looking for work for that person to do, or vice versa. You know, this year, we completed six projects in stormwater. We're dropping down to only two or three next year. So that should free up one of our engineers to start doing some other work. So we think we're at a good level. We're not recommending any increases. And additionally, when we get to hiring staff, such as for traffic studies, some of the smaller ones we can do in-house, but we still go out to more of the experts when we have some more complicated ones. So we're not recommending increases of staff right now.
Okay. And I respect that. I guess the reason why I asked the question, because year to year, the expectation is that things are going to slow up for the city. And it seems to either continue at that pace, if not actually, from my perspective at least, increase. I know the stormwater projects that we have discussed, we've accomplished a good majority of them. I don't want to say all, not even close to it. But also, most, I think we also need to take a secondary look in regards to what additional stormwater, as well as sanitary projects, that we need to do. I know that there's sanitary issues on the north side of town. I know there's some additional flooding on the north side of town that hasn't been accomplished to date. So I just wanted to make sure that, I guess, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, utilizing contract staffing versus full-time staff. So thank you.
Any other questions? Move on to the next section, Mr. Killian? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Toledo.
I have no more strength to raise my arm higher.
I understand.
Sorry. Two quick questions. Just, Director Killian, since you brought it up in this fund, it may be a circle back for the actual street and alley maintenance fund. But I would like, with the Poplar project, to call the attention to whomever is overseeing that, there is a section to the east side of Poplar where Holly and South, kind of, there's like an odd three-way there. There is a section where the asphalt, like where Poplar is, is good, and I know it's going to get replaced. But then there's this weird fifteen or twenty-foot section that is horrendous. And the question would be, can the, with the grant funds and the, whatever we're planning to do with Poplar, can it correct and repair that strange fifteen-foot section in that three-way there?
We will take a look. And when we're using the federal funding, we are allowed to go around neighboring streets for a certain distance for returns. Twenty feet or so should be allowed in there. If not, we'll use more of our grant funds to cover that.
Great. I just wanted to call that to your attention. The second thing, and honestly, I probably wouldn't have caught it if you hadn't said anything, but line thirty ninety-two in contract staffing, you mentioned, you know, over strain on the existing engineering team and the desire to have more funds for contract staffing to help with permit review, especially for single-family homes. And I understand why you would do that through contract staffing. I guess my question is, is there isn't a commensurate increase in the building department's need? So why is there a bigger need in your area, but not a? but not a need for a similar increase in the, in the building department? Because I think you're both involved in reviewing those things. Could you explain that, please?
One of the problems we had that really has extended our reviews is when we enacted all the new stormwater ordinances for single-family houses. The review went from a simple, quick look at it, make sure the grading was working fine, to now rerunning calculations that they're submitting. We're finding that the engineers that are submitting plans are not up to speed on our regulations, even though they've submit 10, 20, 30 a year to us, the same engineers. We're spending two and three and four times reviewing the same house. So, one thing we are looking at is do we need to start putting fees in place that if you don't do it on the first time or the second time, that we're not going to start charging you to offset our time and our, our fees. So, the actual time to review a single family went from, you know, most likely an hour to two hours, to sometimes three, four days dealing with the same project throughout it. So, that's really increased our review time, where if you look at the community development, the house is still the house, that they really haven't changed their requirements. So, that's what we're seeing is the biggest problem, is the review of all of our stormwater requirements for each house.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Howard?
We'll go on to Public Works Streets and Alley Maintenance, page 135. One of the big items, again, you know, we had a very light winter, so we're fortunate last year that we had a lighter winter. One of the main items that also included in this division was our storm sewer cleaning. If you remember, in the last couple of years, we've had a major focus on cleaning our storm lines. This year, we're going to be completed, we will be in the next few weeks, with about 228,000 feet of storm sewers, and we've removed almost 300 cubic yards of debris out of there. So, we are doing a lot of removal, and we think that's also part of why you see in the last storm we had in October, the system handled it so well, is we've really cleaned out of a lot of those lines. We've had some significant changes to these, this budget in here. If you look under 3006, barricade rentals is up about $8,000. What we're finding is working with the Police Department and the world situation it is and possible threats, we've been renting water-filled barriers for more of the events that last several times. You may have seen them at the, the bike race and at the Rock, the Block, I believe we all saw them for the JC Carnival, that it's just providing an extra level of security for the residents and the users of those festivities, and that is adding a significant cost to our actual rental of barricades every year. Under 3008, we're up about $50,000 this year only. What we're doing is, we have a couple of the last remaining quote "unimproved" streets left, the ones that have no curb and gutters kind of have a rough edge. We have gone the last year, and we're looking to finish it next year. We put in a small concrete ribbon. It basically goes down the entire length of the street. It's really to hold the roadway in. We're getting a lot of failures where we were just in the old days, putting the concrete up against the grass or the asphalt against the grass, and that edge would eventually roll off with the plow trucks, delivery trucks, garbage trucks, where the concrete now provides the stability to hold the, the roadway in. So, we're hopefully to see a little bit longer life. And as you see, that's only an increase for this next coming year. We go back down after that. 3074, our street sealing, where we go back on the newer streets and apply a sealant within the first year or two, we're up $44,000 in that account. And that's mainly because we've really extended the, the level of our paving program, but also we've had so many stormwater projects that we've added all those streets, where we've done full resurfacing of those programs. So, we're just increasing the amount of, that we need to do with that. One thing that is down, you'll see, is 3084, we're down $300,000, and that is because we're catching up on the storm sewer cleaning. We're able to get it done a little bit sooner and divert some of that money back to savings. So, those are the major items we have in, in the actual street and alley maintenance, and that's pretty much routine with that.
Any questions on the 6041? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. And I'm kind of going back and forth between the capital expenditure budget, as well as what we're looking at from an operation perspective. I just wanted to touch on 30-74, as you just said, Director Killian, for street sealing. It, it is a significant increase. Are we, and I know you just kind of gave an overview on it, but do you have a ballpark of linear feet a year that we're doing versus the previous years because of that, I think 60%, I don't know now, but significant increase? I'm just, are we doing all new streets? And we were never doing all of the new streets in previous years? Why is there a, such a significant increase?
I don't have a linear footage for, you know, but it is all of the roadways that are done in, like next year, we have some in 2017, but it'll be done in 2018. We can't get all of them. We're still doing catch-up. We have all the SCP projects and stormwater projects, and we're also doing second treatment of reclamation because between size and six years of age on a street. So, we're going back to roadways that were done in 2014. And in 2014, maybe remember, we gave nine miles of roadways between second case, we can have the SCP front, so there's some additional mileage in those roadways that we're getting a second application to. All of that.
Yes. So, is that a new policy going back a second time for reclamation versus in previous years? I just don't remember that being done before. Maybe it has been, and the question was never asked. But is that a new policy, and therefore that's contributing to this?
So, it wasn't a new practice that was done for many years, and then there was a short break and the budget was tight in 2018, 2019, when we had to reduce the budget. So, that second application went away. Staff is now going back to getting that, because we do see the major benefits doing that second application.
So, is this the first fiscal year, or was this being 2018 or 2017 was the first fiscal year of doing the secondary application?
2017.
2017? Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. York?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, probably more of a question for Tom, but on page 135, line item 3084, and page 136, line item 8014, those two increases, or those two numbers equal $900,000, which is on KEV 16, why are they broken out between the two different line items?
I have that, Tom. You got this. What we did is the, we actually separated it from the cleaning, from the actual lining. So, we're looking at doing a little bit more of the actual lining repairs to the sewers as opposed to strictly the cleaning.
So, which one is the lining and which one is the cleaning?
So, the lining should be the capital account, and the cleaning is the contractual service.
Okay. So, storm sewer lining should have been a better explanation for 8014, and then storm sewer cleaning for the other one. Got it?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I can write that in for you if you need to.
No, I got it already. How do you spell cleaning?
I got a way to spell it for you. Mr. Killian, I do have a question about the stormwater cleaning, which I think has resulted in significant improvement in performance. Do we have, I know we're doing a lot of it. Do we have some sort of a rotation that we're setting up for the future of, I don't know how long it takes to get 300 cubic yards stuck in our pipes, but I don't want to wait for it to happen again.
Right. That's one thing we're evaluating is, when we're looking back on some of these sewers, probably haven't been a full clean like this for probably 20 to 30 years. Once we get into it, we'll evaluate, kind of like we're doing with the inlets, we're going back and inspecting some of the, the lines. We're looking at, seeing how much debris we get after one year, two years. And we'll be keeping some money in the budget for that, but we'll drastically be reducing the amount we're asking for every year. One thing we're also evaluating is with all the, where we cut out all the church windows years ago, we don't know if that's adding more debris to the lines where we have to clean them on a sooner basis. So, while it's keeping the intersections clean and flowing, we might eventually be causing more debris to go in the sewers. So, we're evaluating that.
Is there another solution to that, besides knocking out those?
Always looking into different things, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Hanquist?
I've brought this up before, and I think it's relevant just based on my personal observations, but I think we do have a problem with the amount of leaf, yard, and other services that are now in town. They've become rather ubiquitous. And if I had a dollar for every time I saw them blowing debris into the streets that end up into the stormwater lines, I think there's something we have to do about that. I know it's, I'm not big on regulation, and there's a lot of these. I don't think we register them or whatever, and I, I don't want to get into it, but it's clearly an expensive problem, and we've obviously spent a lot of money to address stormwater. And I think it's a problem that just, we need to at least investigate it and see if it's really a problem, if it's anecdotal from guys like me. But it's, it's a reg, it's every week late into the year now that, that they're cutting, trimming these yards. And I would say for the few that do it well, that I've seen, they load their truck up, they'll get, they'll get two or three that they load that say, oh, yeah, I just loaded that, while the other guy's blowing half the other stuff in the street. So, personal observation as an Alderman.
City Manager Grabowski at 9:58, you have a comment?
Two comments on that, because I don't think we'll get to anything else. So, we, we do provide education to the residents on that through the newsletter and other means. And I know personally that our property maintenance inspector has ticketed people for that. We had a conversation about it in particular for one property, and he told me about the, how he observed it, went, asked the person not to do it, they continued to do it, and he wrote the ticket. So, we, we try to enforce, we do enforce it as we can, but it, as you said, it's, it's, it is a bigger problem.
Any other questions on street maintenance? I don't see any. City Manager Grabowski, I think that's it for the evening. I assume you'll know where we stopped. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye. Abused, adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.